Marlin.
Hey.
And I'm sorry, I see there's M. Tramey. I don't know who that person is.
Yeah, this is Mike Tramey from Parkland.
Sorry, your face is a little.
Yes, I know it. My camera, my normal camera is not working, so I'm using a temporary one that's not very good today.
Okay, that's fine. Then I also see Matthew Benach has joined us.
Yeah, Matt Bannack here for the State's Attorney's Office. I was just here to listen since this is CUPHD, but.
Okay.
Good morning, all.
Yes, sorry for messing up your name. Welcome. Um, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Let me just pull up. I'm sorry, I had our agenda up and it just disappeared. Well, so I'd like to call this Board of Health Studies session for Wednesday, March 23rd to order. Amy, what do you call the role, please?
Danielle Tenowich.
Present.
Andy Kornstrom.
Present.
Darlene Klebl.
Present.
Great. I see that we have all three board members present. There is space next for public participation. I see we have several members from the public here. Certainly, you're welcome to address the Board of Health. And there's, we're fairly informal, so I wouldn't say that there's a time limit because we don't have very many participants. So just raise your hand or speak up if you'd like to speak and be recognized. Okay, I see Ruth Wyman has joined. She's our legal counsel. Hi, Ruth. We don't have any old business. We have one item of new business before us. It's the proposed joint health permit and fee with the Champagne County Public Health Department for mobile food establishments operating in both jurisdictions. Jim sent out an informational memorandum with two different options laid out. One is a $300 reduction and the other is a $200 reduction. And I'm not sure if the folks who are present have been able to see that. We certainly can make that available to you. Jim, would you like to walk us through your memo and then we can have a discussion?
Yes, the memo just talks about the background of maybe having a joint permit between the county jurisdiction as well as the CUPHD. And I pointed out, for example, you know, a fixed food establishment pays, if it's category one, pays $400 a year in either jurisdiction. And in CUPHD jurisdiction, they pay the city license fee. Obviously not mobile, so they just pay one city license fee. But mobile units, you know, they're going between both cities. And also they're going out into the county from time to time, or the county places are coming into the district. And we have had confusion and we've had comments prior to COVID, you know, some of the mobile food operators were saying, you know, like the county fairgrounds is the great example is that's would appear to be in the CUPHD jurisdiction. It's actually the county jurisdiction. And so this idea is that maybe make things easier for the mobile food establishment operators. And also it provides some ease with staff, too. And so I had some, you know, things to consider in this. I thought about one of those items. And then those two examples I gave, those were probably about a year ago listing of the mobile food establishments. I didn't bother to update it. But it just gives two ideas of kind of reduction in fees. You know, you could entertain any reduction of fees if you want to choose that route, but it's just for example. And so I think I'm done.
Just to give a summary of what I think is before us today is that essentially there's a proposal from staff to create a joint annual permit between and basically consolidate counties and cities. There'd be one dollar figure that they would pay and that it'd be mobile throughout the county, go wherever they need to go. The issue before the board is whether we want to do that, how much we would charge for it. And I think there's a question about whether we should require an inspection notice placard for uniformity across jurisdictions. And there is a question of whether people can opt out. Does anyone have any questions for Jim before we get into comments?
I do.
Questions? Go ahead.
So what I'm thinking is that there, the opting out part, there probably would be some food trucks, et cetera, that would only be interested in one jurisdiction. I don't know how many that would be, but there probably is going to be that exception of a food truck that just wants to go one place or one city or whatever. So we probably need to have a way for them to be able to do that. The second thing would be, I do agree, we should separate whether we want to do it as a joint application, but also the fees. Those are really two different discussions. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of a joint application, but I don't know. We'd have to talk about the fees a little bit more because the suggested proposal is cutting everyone's fee by half, which I'm not sure is, I don't know if we want to go that far. But that's just, those are just my initial thoughts.
Okay. Andy, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I mean, I think the uniformity is beneficial, of course, for not only the food truck establishments, but also for staffing. So I like that concept. As to the cost, I mean, I'm, I think that's negotiable. I think though, based upon what Darlene said, it defeats kind of the purpose if we have individual licenses for individual communities. For instance, let's just say Cracked. I don't even know if they have a food truck anymore, only one stop right in Champagne. And so if we only have a champagne only permit, then we're back to square one, at least to my understanding. So that would be my only concern about doing that. If the cost was appropriate, doing a countywide permit seems to be the most, seems to make the most sense, but you know, I don't have a strong opinion one way or another, outside of I think Jim's Jim's perspective in terms of workload, I think, is important.
Thanks for that. So just to weigh in, it's the third Board of Health member. So looking over this document, I see that if we, so I would support a consolidated permit. I think the chasing, so I think mobile food trucks are mobile and business practices change based on need and ownership. And probably the best thing actually for all the vendors and for the jurisdictions is to make one uniform application, have one fee, have people move where they need to go. And there's not a lot of administrative overhead in terms of policing that or in terms of continuing to update people's permits. So I would support that. I think it makes it make sense and people don't always, as we've seen over and over again, they don't know where the dividing line between Champagne and Urbana is. And it's confusing at times, like the fairgrounds, very confusing, aren't you? In Urbana, are you in Champagne? So I think that when I looked at the two options, in the first case, there were about, I counted 40 food establishments. Three of them would would have their permit fees go up modestly by under $100. It would mean a about a $4,300 annual loss in fees. In the second option, 23 of the 40 would go up and there would essentially be no loss. It's a very close number. I would support one option, no choice, because I actually think as soon as you, and as soon as you make choice, because there's only three that actually are in one jurisdiction, everyone else is across at least two jurisdictions. And as soon as you, if you have choice, then all of a sudden you have administrative overhead. And for that small a number, it does not make sense to me. And I think that if we set one uniform fee, we, there's only choice because there's choice currently. Like we're one community, it's a mobile food truck. So I would like, I would actually propose that we go with the first option. We do have a loss, but then we plan to increase. So they're going to get a big, most of the establishments are going to get a benefit immediately. They're going to be able to go anywhere they want in the county and they're going to see a decrease in their fees. Of three people are going to see an increase in their fees. And then I would propose we step over time, we're able to step the fees back up once people have made the adjustment to a single countywide program. I also think that we should have placards since they all have the ability to travel throughout the jurisdictions. And frankly, I don't think we should spend our time chasing that issue. So if you are permitted to work in the county throughout the county and that there are two jurisdictions in that area that require the placards, I would support that if you want a food establishment that's mobile, we only have one permit, it's a mobile permit, you're on wheels, you can go in the county at any time. We don't want to chase it. You should have a placard. That's my opinion. I wouldn't fall on my sword on that last one, but I think that's, that's an important piece. So that's what I would, I would support. I think that we have heard about this issue multiple times. It's been confusing to the vendors. And I think it would make sense to just make one consolidated and then continue forward and we can kind of recoup our loss of fees over time. Julie?
I, I think it may be something good to work with the county and the business community to say, first of all, that the county or that the fairground, if you are at the fairground, you are in the county. So there may be places that weren't interested in that and they could maybe also be reached out with some of the events that are going on in the counties. You know, so it, it may be something that the, the business community would want to help with, with getting messaging out about it. Because it is a real benefit to the mobile food operators, I think.
We, we think too, that, you know, having a additional fee in additional jurisdiction prohibit people from maybe going to a festival, you know, in the, in the, some of the villages and vice versa. Maybe the people, those three or four vendors who are in the county, maybe they never wanted to venture into the district because of the additional costs. So I think reducing the cost would maybe open opportunities for those mobile people.
Darlene, can I ask Jim a question?
Sure.
Excuse me, Danielle, sorry. I was looking at Darlene asking Danielle. Jim, so the, the reduction in annual fees, do you have any clue on the reduction of personnel cost that we would recognize doing it this way? I mean, is it significant or just modest?
There's prob, there's probably no change. So.
Okay, that's fine.
Same number of staff, less work.
Less hassle, less misunderstanding, less trying to just, trying to have people understand this dual jurisdiction issue.
So although you have the same number of personnel and it's hard to quantify, you, you'd have a reduction of, of employee hours as you're dealing with the issues that you may see now.
Right.
Okay.
Does the CUPHD Department collect the fees and then distribute to the cities and the county or do the cities collect separately?
We have, we have a intergovernmental agreement with the City of Champagne, the City of Urbana to issue their city licenses and we collect the fees and then we reimburse the cities. We're allowed to keep a portion of those fees for our administrative work, but then we reimburse the cities. We do the same thing for the county. You know, if a county check is written for a county permit that goes directly to the county, but if they happen to pay by credit card or cash in the CUPHD, then we issue a check to the county.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was gonna propose that it be one, one route and distribution through CUPHD so that it's very easy and clear. Other comments from board members on this item? I think this is discussion only for today, correct? So if we were to go forward, the, the goal is to give staff some direction so that they could bring a proposal forward to our next board meeting.
I think Danielle, I, I think actually the, I'm looking at the fees now to see that there is a reduction and it would be, it would be a fairly decent reduction for most of the people in the first scenario. But the total that the cities or the county would reduce is not a huge amount of money. You're looking at $4,000 over the course of the year, which is not a huge amount of money. So I think it wouldn't be a significant revenue loss in that sense for any of the jurisdictions.
That's what I'm seeing as well.
Yeah.
And I think, Diane, did you want to speak to your point? You're welcome to, or I could read it for you.
I didn't have much else to say about that. It's just a, it's just been a continual challenge.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I don't know how other people do it.
Well, I think it's very natural that in this situation, we'd have some level of cooperation and operate as one community, especially when we're talking about mobile food establishments. It's almost impossible to regulate that by jurisdiction. It's different with a bricks and mortar property. Okay, so I'm trying to get a sense of the group, Darlene, I'm coming back to you. I, you know, I guess, I guess I had put a proposal on the table that we go with option one. We have one, not one application, one fee. You don't get to choose. But there's only three people who are really impacted by that in option one, and it's by less than $100. And that we would require placards. So since they can travel across jurisdictions, they would, would have jurisdiction in Champagne or Urbana and therefore would need a placard for that. Any, I guess I would just, I want to put a proposal on the table for discussion. Are there concerns with that? Are there amendments people would like to make?
That has my support as well.
I would support that as well. I think if we're going to reduce the fee slightly, then it's not really going to be a burden, even if people don't want to go to every part in the county, they, they're actually getting a benefit. So I think that works out.
Okay.
Maybe Foodsland will have a festival this year. You never know.
Maybe, or they can all, or they can all go to the state fair, the city, I mean, the county fair.
I will tell you, based on my recent vacation experiences, that I think we are going to see an explosion of mobility as soon as people are vaccinated. Enthusiasm for getting out of your community and into, so we might have a lot more activities in the county and festivals in the cities. This is my guess in this next year, so.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
To make this work, my thought would be to have an intergovernmental agreement, like we have an intergovernmental agreement to provide services. And so maybe Matt and Ruth can suggest something, but maybe we have a separate intergovernmental agreement. So we're not fooling around with any of the ordinances that we have already and standalone.
Okay. So perhaps we could come up with one intergovernmental agreement. I know that's hard for so many jurisdictions, but if we can come up with one that everybody signs and we can have a legal review of the various jurisdictions to make sure they're comfortable with that language. Ruth says it sounds good.
Yeah. We already do, we already do that with our big intergovernmental agreement. So maybe that's the way it will go. And then something to think about is the next time you have an intergovernmental agreement that we renew every five years, maybe that could be added to Appendix A, which is Environmental Health Services, so that it's all in one area next time. That would be coming, that expires at the end of 2023, so probably start in the 2022. You'd need to think about that agreement again.
That's a good idea.
I think that we can amend, I think that we can amend Appendix A anytime we want, Jim, as long as the both boards agree on it, right? And the county board.
Maybe, but it might be better just to do a separate intergovernmental agreement. So everyone sees what's happening with this particular issue.
Okay, so Jim, do you feel like you have a direction or would you like me to repeat my proposal?
I, I think I have direction and we can work on it then. I was hoping that someone from the Champagne County Board of Health was going to be on. Krista Jones had another engagement, so she couldn't be here. But we talked about it at their March meeting, March 17th meeting, I think, or 16th meeting it was. And so they seem to be kind of in favorable of going this way as well.
Okay, is Krista Jones the current chair? Okay. All right. Is there anything else on this topic? If not, our next monthly board meeting is April 12th, 2021 at 4:30 PM. And our study session is suggested for, or tentatively scheduled for April 28th, 2021 at 10:30 AM. In terms of, so I guess the net, the, the ball is in Jim and Ruth's court to draft something and then circulated amongst the legal counsel of the other entities. So it may not be that we see this in April. I guess it depends on your, your timeframe for that. Okay, great. Julie, did you have any correspondence for the board?
Well, I mean, I've been putting stuff out there pretty much on, on Facebook as we get it, but Awaist, do we want to give them a heads up what we're thinking about next week or you want to?
Yeah, that's fine.
So we're, we're thinking about going ahead and moving to 16 plus, opening it up next week. We're really, the U of I is really working on some, and always is really working to try to get vaccines down here to get all the U of I students vaccinated before they leave campus with their variants in tow. The Champagne County, what's it called? Carly's group and the one with Terry Reeve Stack, their group just put out some really nice graphics about the variants, about the in, or the decrease in cases for seniors. And, you know, we're just continuing to vaccinate. We hope to get a lot more vaccine next week, including Johnson and Johnson, but I don't know. Other places are really having trouble getting their people vaccinated because they don't want it. So their, their supply exceeds their demand. We're just the opposite. Our demand far exceeds our supply. So we're constantly, constantly trying to get more vaccine in here. You've probably saw I posted a couple of things this morning, good news. One is that it looked, well, one is that Pfizer is 100% effective in kids or shows 100% efficacy in kids, 12 to 15. So that is good news. So they'll be applying for the emergency use authorization. So we may be able to start vaccinating kids sooner. That would be great. And what else? The, oh, one of the studies came back showing that it does not look like vaccinated people can spread the virus yet, but that's, that's just one of the, I'm sure, many ongoing. Anything else, Awaist? I think that's about that.
Yeah, the, the events, the recent event at Douglas Center, we had a number of staff members volunteering there and it just went really amazingly. And we're certainly a township happy to continue to lend staff support to that. And we are currently surveying all of our participants to find out their vaccine status, if they're willing to share it with us, which most are. And then we're working to, I have a intern specifically focused on getting everyone vaccinated who's a participant and just tracking their vaccine status and helping them connect. A lot of folks, transportation and mental health issues is an issue, so.
We're getting more out into the communities. That's just going to keep increasing, increasing, increasing. There's something being planned right now over at Country Brook, something being planned over at Shadowwood. So, you know, we're just working with the different community groups and, and trying to do that. We're also looking at going into the county. I don't know, Awaist, if you showed them this, but this shows the places that really need vaccinated. These are obviously a bunch of students. This, that is Ludlow, which I don't think surprises anyone. Ludlow is very poor and they have a lot of issues with transportation and stuff up there. So we'll probably be trying to look at going up there. And then any place that's orange, including Rantoul, trying to get more vaccine up there as well. So it seems to be that the most issue is at the northern part of the county. So we will, you know, we'll, we will start looking at, at some of the things. Are you able to go into the jail? Yeah, we go into the jail every, every week or so. We're, we're vaccinating over there all the time. We've been, we've been asking that, you know, I don't know, some of the advocacy groups, like First Followers and stuff, work, talk, talk to people to try to get them more interested in taking the vaccine. We haven't had a ton of people taking it. We have had some. But it's one of those things where, you know, you just keep going back and back and back. But I think that maybe once we get some Johnson and Johnson, that will help over there, too, because that's one shot. And what else about the jail? Seems like there was something else. Oh, I did just get, I sent over to Dustin some a video that was put together to show to people who are incarcerated. I think it was made for the prison, but the same general idea of trying to encourage them to get vaccinated before they're released or just while they're in there in general. So.
Danielle?
Yes.
So there is, there is interest while I have you all on the call today here that the county and the cities and the groups that have been working together during the pandemic as a common group are interested in also continuing to work together to reopen. So if decisions are being made by public health to, you know, in terms of how people need to wear masks or how much distancing or just anything like that, if there's, if those are changing, people are interested in just continuing to try to work together. So the whole county is doing the same thing. The mess and in terms of our messaging and, and the, those kind of things. So just, I just wanted to mention that this morning.
Great, thank you, Darlene. And I would just say, and I, maybe I've been, I've been offline for a week, so you might have this already, Julie, but I really think si, single messaging around myth busting would help. So we're kind of to the point where, you know, trying to really put out, you know, kind of take on different myths every day and myth bust around those pieces might be really helpful. And because I think we're getting to the point where that's going to be the primary issue. I mean, we still have more demand than supply, but I think our next step is going to be overcoming just total utter misinformation.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely seeing that. And it's weird stuff. It's weird stuff like I've never dealt with, you know, in the past, like Mark of Beast or, you know, tracking devices or just basic, basic lack of understanding of even simple science related things. That, I, I think that we're almost to the point now where we need other messengers. And we've been reaching out to a lot of, you know, pastors and religious and faith-based groups and I've reached out to several specifically Republican politicians from the more rural areas to try to to reach out and to let people know, you know, if they're vaccinated and their experience with it and things like that. Because I think that public health isn't always going to be, once you get to those groups, we're not going to be a trusted messenger. Because, you know, we clearly are the ones putting the tracking devices in there for our nefarious purposes. I've yet to determine what those are, but so, I mean, it's just different stuff. So I think we are working to get a bunch of different messengers out there. And I think it's going to just take tons of them. Everybody from elderly people to, to, you know, teenagers. And so we, we've got all kinds of different things going on. So we're just going to have to keep ramping that up.
Okay.
I think though, that as more people get vaccinated, that has seemed to help. We have, oh, wait. Mayor Marlin just asked if we plan on lifting the emergency order soon. No, that was on there. What we're doing is we were going to put it on there specifically so that we could be ready when you got, when the cities do it and the county, we can all go at the same time. But then we were just going to be ready to do it at the same time. So it's kind of like a preemptive approval to say when, you know, we get to this point, we want to do that. So we don't have to have an emergency meeting or anything like that. Although we can have faster meetings than you guys, it seems so. That's why it was taken off of there. But no, I think that that was just confusing at the, at one of the previous meetings, but yeah. No, we're all going to stay, we're all going to stay hopefully as a tight little, tight little group because I think that that has really served our community well throughout this whole entire pandemic, so.
Yes, if you travel, you'll, outside of the state, it's very clear that the rest of the country, especially going south, has no idea there's pandemic. has no idea there's pandemic.
And that's just really scary because it's just, you know, I, we can't say this enough, but every single time the virus transmits to, from person to person, it's, we're playing Russian roulette with the opportunity for it to get a hold with the variant that will blow past the vaccine. And then guess what happens? We start all over again. We start completely over again. It'll be basically another pandemic. We'll wipe the slate clean of everybody that's, you know, so we do not want that to happen. And of course, we can't control, God knows what these other states are doing, but it is, it is insanity. It really is.
Okay, other comments? If not, I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Give a motion a second. Amy, could you do a roll call, please? Yes.
Andy Kornstrom.
Yes.
Darlene Clubel.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks to our guests for joining us and we will see you.
Thank you.
Bye.